I'll look. Yeah, I know why you're coming over here.
There isn't.
We don't have a flag today. I have one in my car.
We don't have a flag tonight. Stand by while we...
The general rule is you face east if there's no flag.
Interesting.
Okay, well, we'll face east. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, flashbulbs out there, close enough.
Close enough, alright.
Alright. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We will start with a roll call. Sarah.
Sarah Hoyer.
Eric Teeter.
Jason Schultz.
Matt Hirsch.
Lauren Tace Miller.
Erica Price.
Rocky Booznitz.
Renee Hanson.
Stacy Bell.
Tim Watts.
Tim Euro.
Tim McInnes.
Lauren Frank.
Kirsten Berman.
Rebecca Hammer.
Lauren Anderson.
To approval of the agenda and minutes of the October 19, 2020 board meeting.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Erica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. All in favor, show of hands. Seven zero. Communications, Schneider Electric Master Facility Plan.
So you all should have a copy of the master plan. This is done by Schneider. They also did our energy audit and all the lighting projects and the projects over at North with the heating and air. I don't know when we started this, Nathan. Schneider Electric, they went through all our buildings and did an audit and came up with all the items building-wise, facility-wise, IT-wise, that we need to address potentially in the next one to, say, 10, 15 years? Yeah. Just items in our district that need to be addressed in the future. We've done this in the past before previous bond election. This will help set us up for items we might want to look at in the future. What we're doing, I'm giving you to read through it. The next board meeting, we'll have Schneider Electric come in and give some detailed information on it. So when you read through it, get some questions you have and things like that. A couple of things on this. Section two, the scope and cost estimates. You're going to see some, they consider near-term items. That means those are items that they feel should be addressed, like in the next three to five years. That gives you kind of some short-term stuff. The long-term items are items that need to be addressed five-plus years. And there's some cost estimates. Those cost estimates are 2020 cost estimates. Since we don't know when we will be doing these projects, those are current numbers. And so just know if we're not doing these for five, seven years, the costs will go up based on that. The other sections you'll see are just by building. And so all the items in section two, you're going to see just a summary of everything. Those items are all addressed by building in those different sections. So as you're looking through it, if you want to see more detail... ...items and descriptions and things like that. So I give you any more. Any questions on that? But next meeting, we will have Schneider come in and talk to us about it. Okay?
Okay. We will move on. Comments and concerns from patrons. This is an opportunity for patrons to address topics directly relevant to the business of the district or items on the current board agenda. All comments must be directed to the president of the board and individuals will be given five minutes to present ideas, opinions, and/or concerns. And please tell us your name.
Tim Watts. Just waiting on Matt.
You're good, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. Thank you again, Tim Watts. I've spoken the last couple of board meetings. I appreciate everything that the teachers, faculty, and everybody here is doing as we continue to try to find ways to educate kids as best as we can. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Our parents, our teachers, administrations, everybody's doing the best that they can. I'm pretty sure we're going to have some, probably some bad news from the Shawnee County gating results today. And I wanted to bring a little bit of attention to the cluster information that the state's also sending out. So it's not all bad news. Out of the 911 clusters, only 43 have come from schools. Out of the 17,289 cases, only 411 have come from schools. Out of the 888 hospitalizations, only seven have come from schools. And while any death is too many deaths of the 548 deaths from clusters, only one has come from school. So again, we know that schools are not the main cluster area of spread for this virus. And I think we need to continue to look at the data like this to help us understand how to approach, you know, the situation. And really, I think, you know, the big question that my wife and I have to ask is, you know, we've gotten our K through six back in, and that's awesome for our fourth grader. But our seventh grader, who spent about a half an hour in tears today, needs some support as well. And we can't forget about her. And so I'm asking, is there a way for us to bring back seventh graders into the middle school? Is there room for that? In the high school, can we bring back ninth and 12th graders? Or maybe there's some other grades that we could bring back. But how can we figure out how many students we can fit in our facilities and maximize that? Do we need to bring in some additional, like trailers? I know when Greensburg was taken out by a tornado, they figured out a way to have school the next year. So if we need to bring in more resources, are we considering everything? And are we thinking about the seventh to 12th graders just like we thought about the kindergarten to sixth graders? The other thing, too, is I feel like we really need to survey our students. How many 12th graders will not return for a semester because of the situation? Does that allow us to get other ninth, 10th, and 11th graders into class? Are there any office spaces available that we could move some students to? I don't know. I mean, but are we asking these questions? Are we engaging the community to find out? And then again, the impact to mental health. In first board meeting, when we had students come and talk, they talked about how it was impacting their mental health. And I don't really remember anybody talking about that in the last board meeting. And I think that's something serious, too. She's got anxiety. I can tell you that I'm stressed out. My wife is also stressed out. But we're not talking about it. And Mr. Mickens gave a good presentation last time where he laid out, here's where we're at if we bring back everybody. Here's where we're at if we do hybrid. But we didn't take any action. We didn't survey anybody. We don't know how parents feel about it. We don't know how students feel about it. And we don't know how faculty feels about it. And I just hope that tonight, we can figure out how to take them to get more students back in, even if it's 50 more every two weeks. How can we take that action? So that is my ask. And I would say if that's not going to be on the discussion, then please help me talk to our child when I walk in tonight. And she says, Dad, can I go back to school? If it's not talked about, it wasn't talked about last time, help me explain that to my seventh grader. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And I will note, under the discussion items on our agenda, we will be talking about middle school and high school. Moving on to business by consent.
Move approval.
I've got a motion by Jason and a second by Eric. All in favor, show of hands. Item B, approved facility use request to Combsy South Elementary Gymnasium.
Bree's Dance Academy is requesting to use Combsy South Stage and Gym for some dance recitals this year. We have worked with them. To give you a feel for what they're asking, I know there's definitely concerns and stuff. For the first one they're having, which is on November 3, what they're requesting is to do two different groups. They'll bring in a group at 6 o'clock. That group will entail six dancers and their families. They would like to have that group, see those six dancers perform. They will have them leave, and they'll bring in another group with eight dancers and do the same thing. So they are willing to keep their groups very small. They just needed a facility to do it with. We feel it's very doable for us and for them, and they will follow our guidelines. So I would recommend approval.
Will they be cleaning in between the groups?
I can't remember specifically on this one, but I believe we request that they hire our custodian to do the cleaning afterwards, and they take care of that.
So they won't be cleaning in between the two groups?
We can have our custodian do whatever needs to happen. So we could have that happen, yes.
Move for approval.
I've got a motion by Jason. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, show of hands. Six all opposed. One, six to one. Alright, moving on to roofing.
This is the group that did the Combsy North partial re-roof project. This is one of the final pays for them for $72,662.70. And then the next item will be to finish up everything for their pay except for the retainerage. Nathan, do you have anything to say on the project? So we recommend approval of this.
Moving on to item D, approved pay application number four to Diamond Everly Roofing.
So this just finishes up the amount to get them to only their retainerage left. And so I recommend approval of that.
Got a motion by Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, show of hands. Seven zero. Moving on to item E, approve USD 450 learning scenario movement.
So on the display here, we've got the county numbers. The county numbers did go up the last two weeks. Last week, they were at a 16, which is the top of the high category. This week, they're at 14, dropped just a hair. We met with Shawnee County Health officials this week. Even the last scorecard, there was a spike in cases. And they're very concerned about the number of cases. And I think they did send out a public release on that on Saturday. And we talked to them specifically. Their main concern is large groups getting together, or groups of people getting together. Concerned about athletic events, obviously with the states and different things going on the last week and weekends and coming up. Schools don't have to comply to the county ordinances right now for this group size. And so we'll be talking about that a little later. But he was wanting to talk to us a little bit about that. I did talk to him specifically. We asked a question, Lauren was at the meeting. Asked a question specifically about all the county schools that brought the elementary kids back. And is that a concern to them with case numbers going up? And he let us know that that was not the big concern. They released the recommendation on modified quarantining. And that was for pre-K through eighth grade. If you are, students are close contacts with each other in the school setting, that they will look at those and possibly not quarantine them if they are both wearing a mask appropriately. And he said, that's, the reason we put that in is because those age groups have lower infection rates and they have lower transmission rates. And so their concern mostly with us was with the older kids, the high school-aged kids and adults. Looking at the scenario. And I guess I'm over here now. Our average for the two weeks is 15 for the county. Our numbers, as you can see, though, are still good. We're not having a lot of cases in our buildings. And we're able to meet the staffing needs very well. And so I'll come to Dr. Pizzino at the county. And based off of how successful we are currently in our buildings, I'm going to suggest we stay right where we are, keep our onsite learning four days a week for our pre-K through six, and stay with hybrid for seven through 12.
These numbers haven't changed today?
Numbers as far as cases?
Yes.
Cases have not, we have not had any other cases. I don't believe, um, we may have had one today. I'd have to take that back. I think we might have had one today. Is that correct? Somebody out there help me? Yes. My numbers end on the 30th.
Student or staff on the new number today?
That'd be a student, I believe. The quarantine numbers are accurate as of today. I did those this afternoon.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Jason. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Before we move to the vote, I do want to say a few things. I know after our last meeting, evidently there was some confusion as to why any of us would vote no on this. And so I wanted to make a few comments today. Since 1999, there have been 231 school shootings, resulting in 304 fatalities and 485 injuries. At no time has anyone questioned whether any of these 304 people truly died from the shootings or if they had underlying conditions. For the last 20 years, we have ensured our students, teachers, staff, safe, and rightfully so. We have literally designed our schools around the very real threat of school shootings. We have installed security cameras everywhere. We've locked all exterior doors during school hours, and we added alarms that go off anytime one is opened. We have adopted and implemented curriculum to address social-emotional needs to help address the root causes of school shootings. We have adopted specifically as a board, board goals related to safety and mental health year after year. We have hired support staff, including school resource officers, psychologists, social workers, and counselors to help with interventions. Students participate in crisis drills, and teachers complete training on how to navigate such a crisis. We've even remodeled buildings to make it so visitors have to come through one central location, our offices, to check in before they can gain access to the rest of the building. And now students have the ability to report anonymously any suspicious activity or concerning behaviors they witness. I'm sure I'm missing some elements that we've adopted or that other schools have adopted, but you get the point. Last year, I set the apparent orientation for our daughter's preschool. A group of parents of three and four-year-olds were told that their students... Not one person objected. One. These are three and four-year-olds, and nobody objected. Why? Because we all want to keep them safe. Fortunately, Shawnee Heights has never had a shooting, but the threat continues to be taken seriously, just as it should. And we would never suggest telling any of these students that. Comparatively, in the last nine months, there have been 230,000 deaths from COVID, including 427 in the age range of four to 18. In Kansas, we've seen 1,046 deaths, and it's not slowing down. In Shawnee County, as we saw over the week, there was a spike in new cases, and the community spread is at dangerous levels. And as we heard during our meeting this weekend, it's not a matter of if, but when it reaches our schools. Our scorecard has an 11-week average of 12.45, putting us right in the middle of high, which based on our scorecard would put us at hybrid or remote. To me, the green on our district scorecard means that our mitigation strategies are working. And if you remember, we were told in the very beginning of this health crisis is that if we were successful in flattening the curve and slowing transmit, it would look like it was a total waste of time. Unfortunately, that's where it started casting doubt that it wasn't serious in the first place. But that's what we're seeing here. And so long as community transmission remains high, the threat remains very real and very serious to our teachers, our students, and all of our staff members. Dr. Pizzino and Dr. Cooley told us that the best way to mitigate the spread is with small groups, as much distance as possible, and with masks. We have many classrooms with more than 15 students per room. These students are eating in their classrooms without their masks on together. This isn't safe. Just as we wouldn't roll back safety efforts to prevent shootings, we should be rolling back our mitigation strategy for this. And that is why I will continue to vote that we get a smaller, a lower community transmission safe for everybody. With that, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Four to three. Thank you. Moving on to item F, approve high school handbook change.
Mr. West had come to me and asked that we... ...in the handbook. Right now, second semester seniors have the option to reduce their schedules. But you can see in the red there that they have to take a minimum of five classes. As we look at trying to get more kids into the building, trying to serve students that are struggling, we felt like it was an opportunity. If seniors could be exempt from this policy, we may have some take us up on reducing their schedules a little more as seniors. So what this would, if we made this an exemption in the red, what it would do is allow us to have seniors, they would only have to take the number of classes they needed to actually graduate. That would open up possibly some classes, room sizes, reduce room sizes. It would possibly help teachers to do other things. Mr. West, I'll ask you to, I know we had some questions possibly on how many kids you think we might free up and some things with that. So if you could give them a little information there, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So we have, we have currently in Power School 259 students that are enrolled as seniors. Right now, we do enrollment in the spring of the year. And so last spring, in February, March, we got most of it done prior to the shutdown last March. 18 students at that point in time were enrolled in classes that would allow them to be semester grads. 11 had already scheduled to be at Washburn Tech only second semester. And out of the 230 that are left, 96 had requested a shortened schedule under the scenario in red where they would take at least five classes. The prediction, I visited with a couple of the counselors today and their numbers kind of fit in with mine. We think that under the current conditions, that out of those 230 that's left, when you take out the semester grads and those that are just being at Washburn Tech full-time, we think as many as about 130 to 150 of them might take less than five classes. It would be optional, by the way. They can certainly take more if they want to. But again, we think that probably around half or more would take less than five classes. And then the rest of them would take five or more. Lots of reasons to take more than five. KESHA requires five classes, so if you're planning on taking forensics or band, choir, orchestra, have state competitions that are in the spring. Athletics, of course, require five classes, to be enrolled in five classes. We also have several classes that by the time they get to be a senior, they become electives, even if they're taught by the colleges. So all of our dual-credit courses, college algebra, college statistics, freshman comp, intro to lit, college biology, college public speaking, and college beginning Spanish, one and two would be classes that a lot of our seniors would choose to remain in, even though they would be electives. Our AP courses are all year-long and we know we retain a lot of seniors in those courses, although some of those, AP computer science, AP research, AP chemistry are electives by the time they get to be a senior. Have lots of strong elective choices as well. Ceramics, you know, we have just got an excellent array of courses that kids might want to remain in. And then we know that in most cases, in cases where students are collecting social security for a variety of reasons, they need to remain full-time. It may be a parent's choice, maybe a student's choice to remain full-time as well. So certainly that option would be there. But as Mr. Hertz, the opportunity for kids to take fewer opens up some seats. We'll use those in a variety of ways. As you mentioned, you'll hear from me a little bit later on tonight to opening up some seats for students that are struggling. It'll give you guys later in the discussion as well, some opportunities to make some decisions in terms of what second semester might look like, where we could eliminate some elective classes altogether to create more sections of core classes to reduce the class size as well. And under that scenario, there would be less for our kids to take. So again, the conditions have changed slightly that we feel that it might be in all of our best interest for you to consider this, just in order to help reduce numbers for other kids in ways that the current conditions may warrant. So, any questions?
It's a KESHA requirement that to participate in any of those activities, you have to have five credit?
Yeah, so yes. That State Activities Association has very few requirements for participation. But two requirements that they do have is that students would have five, four courses the previous semester to the competition and that they're currently enrolled in five full-weight classes during the semester of competition. So for any of our students that would want to compete, again, not just athletic, but KESHA-sponsored, non-athletic events, would need to pass five this semester and be enrolled in five in the spring in order to be able to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is it a permanent change?
No. No, I think that past history would suggest that our students are better served by five for a variety of reasons. This would have been, this would have been about, this is probably either year three or year four, where the five minimum class guideline has been in place. Prior to that, students could always take as few as what, and we actually came three or four years ago and asked that this be added as part of the student handbook. So this is, I guess, maybe more of a suspension for a semester, given the current conditions. As things stand right now, I would want this back next year.
You're approving just an exemption for the next semester only.
Okay.
I move approval.
Okay. I've got a motion from Renee. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Jason. All in favor, show of hands? Seven, zero. Thank you, Ed. Moving on to item G, appoint board members to CASB Virtual Delegate Assembly.
So the KASB has conventions coming up. They're going to do it virtually this year. But with that, they always have the annual delegate assembly. Well, we need to select a delegate and an alternate, in case that person for some reason can't end up serving. What they do with the delegate for a view that I'm familiar with is, I believe they select president-elect as part of this process. They look at proposed KASB constitution amendments and they make decisions on those. And then they look at legislative positions and priorities that the KASB is going to promote. So it's an important position that we have a member on and so we just need to select somebody for that.
Can you remind us what the dates are of the conference?
Yes. Well, the, for the delegate piece specifically, well, the conference is
The fourth through the sixth.
Is it third through sixth or fourth through sixth? Let me see.
December, right, December.
December 4th through the sixth.
December 2nd to 4th is the actual convention.
Okay.
And then the delegates' meeting is on December 3rd at 11:45. And then they have a second meeting on January 21st at 6:00 PM.
But like, or unless somebody else is interested.
I can be the alternate.
I move that we nominate Lauren as our delegate and Erica as our alternate.
Okay. Got a motion from Renee. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Eric. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. I'll try. All right. I approve Shawnee County Health Department direction. Nope, I skipped H.
H.
Approve Shawnee County Schools Legislative Positions.
Pull this up here. Every year, the five Shawnee County Public School districts get together. The superintendents come up with and talk about legislative positions we would like to pursue. And we have all our school boards approve those. We met, it's been a week or two now. We met and talked about this and put this together. So I'm just bringing this to you. This is the first step in the approval process. You'll see it's very similar to what we've done in the past. We did on this first page make the emphasis COVID. That has been part of all our decisions this year, so we kind of put our positions involving that. Things that have changed slightly that are different from the past, really most of it goes COVID-related. So you'll see underschool funding, fund operations of schools in all environments. We know that we've had so many more expenses due to COVID. We wanted to make sure that continued to be supported if this was continued for a while. We wanted to make sure we were getting funding for that. Teacher recruitment was on there in the past. We added access to technology on the last page there. Affordable broadband is a huge issue. Making sure all our students in the county have access to that. They're making some steps in there, but we still have a ways to go. So we added that piece. And then we added the piece at the very bottom, the social emotional health. We all know that that's an important piece right now. The one thing that to make sure you don't miss there, we did suggest expanding Medicaid. This provides better health insurance options to families. We know when families are healthier, when they're getting medical attention, that was an important thing at this time, especially with COVID. But that's a definite change. I wanted to make sure you all caught that and we're in agreement to it.
We've talked about that in the past and Auburn-Washburn was against it. And so that was something that we couldn't add in. So that's really interesting.
Yeah, I was really happy.
We don't know if it'll make the final cut, but all the boards have to approve it. But it was something we talked about superintendent-wise and felt like we'd try to put it back in.
Especially with so out of employment.
Yep.
I personally have never understood why it wouldn't. But I guess I'm ignorant in some things.
I move for approval.
Seconded.
Got a motion by Eric, a second by Jason. All in favor, show of hands? Seven, zero.
So most of you have read the information from last Saturday, the kind of public health announcement. This kind of goes along with that. When we met with Dr. Pizzino on Saturday, again, very, very concerned. You can see that from the top. It's a sharp increase in the number of cases, even since the numbers were put out. When you look at Friday and Saturday, I think you'll, and you see the week coming up, definite increase in numbers, a spike in numbers. With that, their concern, like I said, was with group gatherings. And their concern was, as you see in this first paragraph, hospitals being able to keep up, whoops, and the health department being able to track. Right now, the numbers were so high, they were concerned about even being able to track the close contacts. Right now Shawnee County hospital-wise is okay on ventilators, but they were actually shipping ventilators, I believe, out to other counties. I think Western Kansas is struggling on their number of ventilators. And so, more concerned with that. He came to us wanting to get support from us as county schools and to see if we would. Right now, county schools are exempt from the county health regulations regarding mass gatherings. We don't have to follow the mass gatherings regulations. So at football games, things like that, if we wanted to have more than the 500 limit, we'll have to, based on the policies. What they're asking us is with the cases going up, would we as county schools all agree to kind of have a mass, kind of like we did with the legislative thing, do the same thing with the county health and say we would all agree to follow the 500 limit for mass gatherings outside and the other regulations they have set for other groups. So that's what this is asking. Once we came up with that, we'd probably have some sort of a statement that goes with it. But they all signed off on this as county health. And at least the group I was talking with superintendent-wise, I think they were all pretty favorable, but we're going to take their boards for approval. So I would recommend that we approve that.
Does this apply only to outdoor events or how does it, does it apply to indoor events as well?
No, we would agree to follow all the policies indoor and outdoor as far as mass gathering numbers and regs in those.
How many people on average have been coming to the football games? I know that season's over with, but I think it is.
Ed, do you remember what his numbers have been?
We issued two wristbands to every, require our both teams rostered coaches.
I'm aware of that, but how many have been actually coming?
That I don't know. I know when I look at the stands that those who choose to socially distance have every opportunity to do so.
Okay. So the stands are a lot more sparse.
Some of the concern now is that we'll be moving inside basketball games and things like that. And we'll definitely work with Cody, Whitney, and good plans in place.
We had a conference meeting with the physical math, I thought it was very good. While I'm in the nation, at the corporate time, we've had these conversations as to maintain the two wristbands. Our plan right now is to remain with
How does that work for the visiting side? I'm thinking of basketball. How does it, do they get two?
Ed, can I have you use the microphone so I make sure we can hear? Ed, can I have you use the microphone?
We would have to designate, the question was, yeah, how does that work for the visiting side? We would have to be a little bit more direct in terms of assigning locations for groups.
And they also then would be issued two?
They would, yes. And they were with our fall sports as well. We just met up somewhere or the game before, or, yeah, we made it happen. So, yeah, they were issued.
Before our first varsity basketball game, we'll make sure and meet with the county and make sure our, what we're doing meets what they want us to do. But we'll make sure that happens again.
But, yeah, we think we can duplicate what we did in the fall. It would stay well underneath the 500. And certainly when you take multiple gyms that look more sparse than what 500 would normally look like and be able to provide the same service that we did in the fall.
How do you think that that will look for bowling and swimming?
It's my understanding that the bowling alley will not let spectators in, so it'll just be a team only. I'm not sure that the number of schools, I don't think you're going to have, you're going to have competitions that's going to have five, six, seven schools. I think it'll be more limited to two or three, maybe four tops, depending on the number of participants. But most locations, including, I believe, and I didn't want to double-check, but as you're thinking about things, most locations, including ours, are going to not allow spectators in to watch.
And then wrestling, does that start up here pretty soon too?
It does. And I'd have to lean on Cody a little harder in terms of what the plans are for wrestling. I know that, again, we had some discussions in terms of number of teams that would be at any single competition. And in most cases, at least in terms of the conference, it will be less than normal. We'll be looking at some dual, maybe some more duels or more tries than what we've had in the past. And then I know, similar to cross-country, I know there's been some discussion about taking big competitions and just breaking them apart. Matter of fact, we hosted two cross-country meets this past year that we don't normally do for that very reason. We just grabbed some schools in the Topeka area that were going to compete over in the Kansas City area and we just ran out of our place. So I believe and I, that that's going to occur in wrestling as well. Although, again, I don't know the specific details. He would definitely be the one to answer those questions with 100% accuracy.
Who would entertain a motion?
Would you approve?
Motion by Eric. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Jason. All in favor of hands? Seven. Moving on to discussion items. A is secondary full onsite direction.
We're getting to the point where, I guess, high school and the middle school, Mr. West, Mr. Urick, and myself, are we needing some direction from the board? If we're going to make any major changes to schedules, what we do at the high school, middle school, we need to know fairly quickly because that's a huge endeavor if we involve master schedules. So we just wanted a little guidance from you. What are you kind of thinking about moving forward? Are we wanting to not move forward until the county changes stance at the middle school and high school on social distancing, other than trying to get as many kids as we possibly can in, working with struggling students and things like that? Kind of go the course we're going right now? Kind of go the course we're going right now? Or middle school involving cohort groups or something of that nature? You know, Mr. Urick talked about that last week, and some of the things that would happen as far as electives and stuff. We'd have to at least know that's what happened. So do we want to go that route, where we look at cohort groups, kind of like we have in the elementary schools? Where do we want to go? I guess, are you interested in a surveying students, staff, public? A majority of stuff? So I'll kind of open it up to just hear what you're thinking. We can obviously have either, either of our information on thoughts. We have spent a lot of time thinking options and ideas and stances, but right now, we're just in that thinking mode and not necessarily trying to crank it out. But if we're going to actually try to get it all to work, then we want to know before we spend a ton of time doing it.
I think the surveys are important. I think surveying the students is important, as well as the staff and parents. I like what you guys are doing as, as far as getting more kids back into the building. Can you guys elaborate on that, Mr. West and Mr. Urick?
You're from the struggling one? The struggling students?
Yeah. With struggling students, and, you know, you spoke about the seniors as well.
Good evening, my name is Tim Urick, I'm the middle school principal. We have two valuable learner initiatives that we started today. They're going this week. One is called Cohort Study Hall, and that's for the Cohort B students. They came to school today, if they're in that program, and they worked in the library under my supervision and the supervision of their counselors, Mrs. Boyd, and then Mrs. Rodinghouse, our librarian. And so they had a productive school day. It was highly regimented and scheduled, and so we're doing a lot of teaching and training and helping them to build some of the habits of highly effective remote learners. Students sent me today and said, "Mr. Urick, this is the first day I got all my work done." So that's, that's good. The second program is just called Four Day School, and that's for students who need to be in school more than just the two days of hybrid learning, but they wouldn't be served well in a study hall situation. They have to be around their teachers to be the most successful. So four-day school, students come to school. The Cohort B students who are in four-day school came to school today. They'll come to school on Wednesday, and they're in school an extra two days. They rotate through their classes, and that's how they're going to be successful. So the question is, you know, how do we identify these students? We use at-risk criteria determined locally, and that could include not performing at grade level, failing multiple classes, that the student is unsupervised at home, unsafe, unwell, hungry, and that we're unable to meet the child's learning needs via high schooling model. Seventy students are involved in this program. The limiting factor right now is our ability to transport them to school. So while we only had 12 students come for the study hall today and more of the four-day students, we could have had more if they were able to get here. But transportation is a limiting factor. Jafon is working on routing those students now. What questions would you like to ask?
That just started today, right?
Yes, sir. And the process we went through is I had the teams rank students for the four-day program and rank students for the study hall based on what they know of those students. And then the counselors, Mr. Mickens and I, we got on the phone and we called parents and we invited students in for this program, and the ones who are here today accepted that. But there are more who have accepted. They just need to be able to get here because we drive them on a school bus.
How long would you estimate it would take to get a effectiveness of how the program is working?
Evaluate the effectiveness in six weeks. Six weeks is the standard amount of time. Once an intervention is applied, you go back and take a data sample and see how the student is doing.
With your current strategy, do you see adding any more students as the six weeks progresses, or staying with the 72?
We can add some more students to four-day and the seventh grade. The seventh grade is a smaller class. There are only 275 students in the seventh grade. Cohort A is light. We can add more Cohort B students to come to four-day school on the A days. That's Mondays and Tuesdays normally. Everything else is full up. We're on the razor's edge of social distance in Cohort B for seventh grade, and we're overflowing in the eighth grade. The only reason that we are able to maintain social distance in the eighth grade is because 35 of those students are Cohort C, and they learn fully remotely.
Thank you.
Before you step away, so last meeting, you mentioned that the challenges around bringing people in, you have three, you have three things you had to schedule around. I can't remember, was it orchestra, band, and something else, right?
Yes, Mr. Bozenz is talking about the cohorting model of schooling. The thing I'll say before I describe that is that Mr. Hirsch did a favor for me, emailed out to the superintendent's listserv and asked his colleagues if there were any schools, four, five, or six, say, that were running a cohorting model successfully, and there aren't. And the reason there aren't is because it destroys the master schedule. The master schedule is built a year, over a 60 to 90-day period. It's an intricate one-to-one function. And the students are enrolled in year-long courses. For example, a first semester of Spanish, a second semester of Spanish, first semester of orchestra, a second semester of orchestra. If all of a sudden we have to have a condition where the same students have to be in the classroom all day, it breaks everything. They can still have some electives, but I have to assign electives to them. So we'll have a condition where Eric has already taken Spanish one, because he's on the team that gets Spanish one, he takes it again. And so it's going to be, I don't know that it would be a highly productive school day. We would do a better job of having more kids in school. Now, they wouldn't be social distanced. They would be in their classrooms with 25 to 31 of their best friends. The theory there being, when the COVID comes, only that classroom has to quarantine. Only those students might be affected. I would just run the regular master schedule and do a slower scale-up.
Matt, when, so the Shawnee County Health Department, they issued new guidance, is that just at the elementary level for students who have an encounter with a COVID classmate, I'd say, if they're both properly wearing the masks? That only, that new guidance only applies at the K through level?
It extends up through eighth grade.
Okay.
And I asked him specifically, we asked him, so does this mean you're going away from the six-foot social distancing requirements? He said, "No, it is not the intent." But in the classroom, if, if those kids are appropriately wearing their masks, and they will consider each case and make a decision. We, I asked him, give me an example, because I don't have a great feel on what it's going to look like in practice. So if they're only together for 10 minutes, does that mean he won't quarantine them? But if they're together for 30 minutes, he would? I don't know. I don't know how restrictive they're going to be, but he said they will look at those cases up to eighth grade and potentially not quarantine close contacts if they are wearing masks appropriately. But it is not negating his request to do six-foot social distancing.
Sounds like one of the biggest problems we have, bringing the middle school and the high school back to full-time, or even four-days, full-four-day status, would be the fact that the elementary cohorts, where
Yeah, but I would point out, too, and at that middle school and high school level, they are intermingling now. I mean, they're all participating in different activities, and, you know, whether it be band, or at the high school level, or football, or volleyball. We just ran through fall activities here, and I think it was successful, and there hasn't been widespread transmission.
Now, as part of the success of our COVID rates being so low, because of the fact that we're mitigating everything, and the first opportunity we get to bring everybody back in, everybody back into school full-time,
The, um, the county has done a great job, school-wise. We have no, he's told us several times, and we're still there, no cases of transmission within a school setting, whether it's elementary or high school, or middle school. The concern with the current situation is the more positive cases you have out in public, the higher potential for that to reach schools and settings with people. You just, it's just, it's a mathematics. When he first came out with the, the guidance on the modified quarantine situation, I was optimistic that maybe that's where he was headed. His social distancing might be reduced because they, they felt like that group was safe enough to do that, but he has not come out and said that specifically. Two months from now, three months from now, if the elementaries all do a great job and things seem to be going well, this doesn't, the current state doesn't affect middle schools potentially, but we don't know that.
Ed, at the high school level, I know one of the concerns this semester was that some of our students are enrolled in classes that don't actually happen on campus. Is there a way to have a schedule for our students that in the event, say, in the spring, things are looking better and we can start bringing students back, that it makes it easier to shift? Because I know that was one of the pieces that made it difficult to even kind of consider bringing more back, is because it would, there would be students who would have no, you know, some of their classes wouldn't even exist in person.
Most of them, are you talking about our remote students through edgenuity? Yeah, most of our students that are taking courses through edgenuity have the same titles, and the, and the curriculum is aligned, scope and sequence with our current courses. Matter of fact, we brought a handful back at quarter. And likewise, we had about, we had a handful that went from, from hybrid to remote. And it was a fairly seamless transition because the courses did match up. If, if second semester, we were looking at bringing students back more than just the two days a week and social distancing was a goal, we would, we would have to make lots of changes possible. We would have to make lots of changes. And we could probably, we could accomplish social distancing probably in 60 to 70% of our classrooms with some pretty dramatic changes in the master schedule. But to do that, we would be counting on about the same number of students, which is about 165, that are remote, to stay remote. Otherwise, the math just doesn't work out in our favor. Yeah, right now, just back up in terms of the, of the current semester, I'm actually going to give you about the same numbers that Tim gave you. We have about 70 to 75 students right now that are coming back for a third day. Small handful of those are coming actually for four days, but for the most part, it's a three-day. We started last week. We started the day that the elementaries came back full-time. We got some of our high school students back for a third day. Our, our case managers for IEP students sent out invitations to all of their kiddos and families. And those students, for the most part, with some exceptions, are staying with their case manager in their classroom throughout the day, utilizing that as a supported supervised study hall. Our JAG teachers, Job for America's Graduates, those teachers also sent out invitations to all their students. And we have a handful of students that are coming part-time from about 10 to 1 in their classroom, for the most part, again, supervised and supported by the JAG teacher. And then each counselor, assistant principal, D O, and there's four of those in our school, got to select five students from each of those groups, so a total of 20. And then I picked five also with families that I had been working with. So we had 25 families that we invited to have their students come back for a third day to follow their schedule for whatever day that is. So if it's a, if they're a Group B student, and they come on a Monday, then they're following their Thursday schedule, their one T-Ver time, 3, 5, 7 schedule. So they're actually traveling from teacher to teacher, and we're taking those kids one socially distanced with the addition of their body before we solidify the plan. And again, so, so again, total, when you add up all that together right now, we have between 70 and 75 students that are doing that. We can add more, but this is the one down below us, as well as and then we're, we're kind of watching to see what opportunities might open up for transportation once the elementary plan gets solidified. You know, that just happened last week, obviously, and then to see what happens with the middle. So there may be, if there's an opportunity for us to allow some sort of transportation three, four, or five weeks down the road, we want to make sure we keep some seats open for those kiddos as well. So I think we can probably settle probably in that 90 to 100, 110 range, when all is said and done this semester. Again, and we're looking at academically out-res students, for the most part. We use our AWL, our Academic Warning List, if you're familiar with that. That's a report that we can print through Power School that identifies students who at the time that the report is generated are failing to earn credit in two or more classes. And so that's, that's kind of our strike, when we identify those students. But again, second semester would be doable, but dramatically different. And again, you crack the door open a little bit for those opportunities with your motion earlier today. The classes that would be difficult to socially distance in are the ones that Tim kind of described. You've got those year-long courses, Spanish, for example. It's a year-long course, and so if I've got two cohort groups that are operating right now, and one has nine and one has 14, when you bring them together, you've got a class of 23, obviously. That's not a socially-distanced classroom, and I can't spread those kids out into other sections of Spanish because they're all like that. Math is probably the other one that's difficult for the same reason. You've got a year-long class that's combined common number.